Pretty when you heard.
All right.
I'm sure.
That's right. Thank you, everybody. I think this has shaped up to be a great meeting of the path of order of education tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven thirty. And if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Yeah, this is gonna be my favorite meeting. So before we get started, I'd like to invite any public participation with Emily, our secretary.
So the board welcomes public comment at our meetings. If you'd like to speak, we just asked that you state your name and your address. Comments are limited to three minutes in order to make sure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. Our board meetings are not at time for discussions, which should not be expected for board or administration to respond, but if necessary, you'll be contacted for follow up. If you're in person, we just ask that you raise your hands. And if you are on Zoom, we also have to take. So do we have anyone in person who would like to speak at this time? Do we have anyone on Zoom who would like to speak at this time? Okay, thank you.
All right, excellent. And next up will be a report from Daniel Hand to student representatives Eli and Brooke.
Yeah, so trimester two exams ended on Monday and the animal rescue club had therapy dogs in the library. So you can go before, in between, or after your exams and pet the dogs to calm yourself down. And with the end of trimester two starts the beginning of trimester three, my last trimester as a part of this board in the la- my last trimester at Daniel Hand. So it's very exciting, but also a little sad. Throughout February, the Save Promise Club collected used teddy bears and donated them to the Madison Police Department to be distributed to families who couldn't afford them. The College and Career Fair is on March thirteenth, where over a hundred people from different local businesses and colleges around the nation will send representatives. And they'll set up around the high school. They'll have little stands and they'll have information for students. It's mostly juniors, but people of all grades are allowed to attend and just get a basic understanding of these colleges. And it's really helpful because we'll have colleges from California and Florida where you don't necessarily know if you wanna you know, take a flight over to California to see the college, but you can get a little understanding about the college and then decide if you are serious about it. And the American Red Cross will be at the high school on Tuesday, March nineteenth for a blood drive.
And now that trimester three is wrapping up, that also means that the winter sports are wrapping up. And we had a lot of success this year as the gymnastics team won states and the girls skiing team got second place at states. And then the spring sports are in the preseason right now, starting next week. In the end of March, there's going to be a lot of junior testing coming up with March twentieth and March twenty seventh, having SATs for all students to be able to attend in school and also the NGSS testing, which is a science required test for all juniors. And this means that all the other students will be able to have a delay, which is pretty nice for them. And going on to the next year, all the teachers and the faculty are really deep into scheduling process and sort of make a headway.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments for Eli or Brooke?
Eli, do you know where you're going yet?
No, I don't. I have ten more colleges to hear back from.
Time to think about it.
I think about it every. I don't try to. You'll have great options. Thank you.
We'll be thriving. Yep, no matter where you go.
Thank you.
And all right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up is our superintendent's report. Yes, thank you, Mrs. Kelly. March is Board Member Appreciation Month on behalf of the students, families, and staff of Madison Public Schools. I'd like to thank all our board members for their service. We will do a more formal recognition, our second meeting in March, but I wanted to remind the board of that honor and thank them on behalf of the town. We have two exciting recognitions for Poulsen tonight. So it's really great to be able to combine these. They both came together. We intended to have Wolveron earlier, but Snow had impacted that. So when I was in Poulsen over in one time in January, Mrs. Hart asked me if I would be willing to sit down with Will and hear about his petition and survey and receive a PowerPoint presentation. I couldn't, you know, pass on that opportunity. We had a, I felt a great conversation. I explained to him the fun details of how board calendars, school calendars are developed and that we do this, you know, two years in advance oftentimes. And Will shared his thoughts in detail about how he would like to see the day after the Super Bowl off. He has over two hundred and twenty-five signatures and maybe more at this point, but I felt it was important for the board to hear this great work of this young man and his friends. And I wanted to turn it over to Ms. Hart first because I think she wanted to share a little bit about this as well and explain why she signed the survey herself.
So at Poulsen, Will is running around the halls with this pad of paper and a pen. And I said to him, what is it? A petition. Get the day after the Super Bowl off. I said, hand it over. Let me sign it. I'm number one forty-seven on that. So as Dr. Cook said, I met with him and explained that Will and I had spoken. Will said, what? I'm gonna get to meet Dr. Cook. What? And I said, yeah. I'm not ready for this. I'm not. I didn't have a bright outfit, right? Had a great conversation with Dr. Cook. I left. It was all up to him. And next thing I knew, Dr. Cook had said, would Will, would Will like to come to the board event meeting and share his thoughts? So I met with Will again. I said, Will, did you get the email? So he took a look. We talked it through and I explained to him everything about what the setup was, how it all works, how the board event works. Because a lot of middle school students, they don't know exactly what the board does or how it functions and how important it is. So when I walked in tonight, Will says to me, all right, there is a gavel. So I turned it over to Will. He's got some great ideas to share with you. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Will Verone and I'm an eighth grader at Poulsen Middle School. I am here today to request that Madison Public Schools approve the time off starting with the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five calendar for Super Bowl Monday. I have over two hundred signatures from Poulsen Middle School and the community on petition. And I believe there's a lot of support for this idea. The Super Bowl isn't just a game. It's a holiday. It's the grand finale of a long football season. It's the big game. In twenty twenty-three, one hundred and fifteen million fans watched the Super Bowl and two hundred million fans were expected to watch this year. Football is the number one sport in the nation. The Super Bowl has entered the unofficial holiday category. It is a needed break from tiring schedules with family and friends. There is late night excitement with food, drink, and spirit from a great game, a halftime show, and amazing commercials. We make a memory to be valued for years to come. There are consequences to Super Bowl Sunday. No one wants to face the next day. It's a Monday times two. Students were up late and tired. Students haven't done their homework, nor do they have motivation to study for a big test. Students are unable to pay attention and learn the next day. Poor behavior results in cranky kids. Facing responsibilities on a Monday have a negative effect on mental health. Calling out sick affects the whole week. The students and teachers fall behind and schools cannot staff classrooms. Okay, reality check. How does America feel about Super Bowl Sunday on Monday? In twenty twenty-one, eight million Americans said they would take a pre-planned day off, the Monday after the Super Bowl. Around sixteen million American employees plan to miss Monday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-four, the day after the Super Bowl fifty-eight. According to a survey of one thousand one hundred ninety-two Americans conducted on January tenth, January twelfth by the Harris Poll through the Workforce Institute at UKG. A survey of a thousand people said that half the sports fans in the U.S. would rather trade another holiday to have the day after the Super Bowl off. USA Today has reported that Super Bowls, that surveys showed that nearly ninety people suggested they might call on sick on Super Bowl Monday, while more than twenty-six million American workers said they were more likely to miss at least some work the day after the Super Bowl. Super Bowl Monday for Madison Public Schools benefits everyone. There's motivation to do well instead of dragging through the day. There's less stress because everyone has extra time to prepare for Tuesday. Mental health is recharged to support the challenging tasks of the week. Performance is enhanced, resulting in better learning and test scores. Connectivity with family and friends is not cut short because of an early start on Monday. Teachers and students get a big morale boost because they feel supported to enjoy time at home without consequences. Conclusion and recommendation. I believe there is flexibility in the Madison Public School calendar. Health and wellness are a priority in our schools. Time off after the Super Bowl Sunday is a wellness accommodation. The board could add one day to the end of the school year to support the day off. Minimally, the board could approve a late arrival on Monday without consequence. There is no impact on the required number of school days. And with your help, Super Bowl Monday will be a holiday at Madison Public Schools. Please vote yes to support this calendar change and thank you for your time. Here are my sources.
I am fired up.
I have a question. Thank you for your presentations. Really well organized and compelling. I'm curious what led you to this. Was it a personal experience that you were too tired on a Monday or?
So every day I wake up after Super Bowl Monday, I like can't get out of bed. My mom's like, Will, get out of bed. And we always arrive at, we always arrive at school late. And my brother, I drive with him because he's a high schooler and I arrive early. He always arrives late. So.
So you're impacting him.
Yeah, and I stay up till like eleven and I just, the day goes by and then I watch the Super Bowl and I wake up in the morning.
Yeah, got it.
And I can't get out of bed. Just like just go up to school and I can't get any work done. Cause like my eyes are like.
Right, right.
Did you have a lot of teachers sign? Cause I would imagine.
I had, I went to the office and I was like, do you have one sign this petition? And the entire office signed it. Everyone in the office, like this heart, this normal occurring, this shine, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. And so we'll, we'll be talking. Appreciate that. Also from Poulsen, we're pleased to have Christina Zeratini with us. You may recognize Christina. She presented at state level last week. I sent the video out to the board. So she's been very busy representing Madison Public Schools and Poulsen Middle School. Christina came up with the idea to have Poulsen versus State in a global reading competition named Read Bowl. Continuing with our football theme tonight, Read Bowl was put on by Malcolm Mitchell, an author of reading activities, former Super Bowl champion with the Patriots, and he does this program now. And so I will again turn it over to Ms. Hart to do a little more introduction.
Got to want Poulsen right now, right? Great job, Will. Thank you. So thank you for hearing from Will, but now also recognizing Christina Zeratini. She's a sixth grade language arts and social studies teacher and does a whole lot more than just that. In fact, just a little sidebar, Leap Day, as we all know, only once every four years. Christina comes to a leadership meeting and she says, I've got an idea. I saw it on TikTok. I'm like, okay, let's hear it. So Christina's idea came into real life. Every single person, staff and students, has a Mardi Gras bead for for Leap Day. And all around, there's some set rules, but all through the day, we had rock, paper, scissors championship. And if you lost, you had to hand over your necklace to the next person. And then we had the playoff at the end for each grade level in the cafeteria at the end. Again, all just another brainwave of Christina, who hears and sees and reads constantly and has these ideas and brings them and makes them come alive at Poulsen. So I appreciate everything that she does. The Read Bowl, again, came from Christina. And I said, your idea? Run with it. So she did. She went to her sixth grade team, shared the idea. And the entire sixth grade language arts teachers said, yep, we're in. So not only did all of our sixth grade students participate in trying to read the most number of minutes possible, which obviously we all know is a win-win for many reasons. But Team Six Four Christina, Christina's homeroom and her partner, Ms. Rayo, ran the most, read the most for the entire state. So I turn it over to Christina. If there's anything you want to add and bring up your students so that they can tell a little bit about it too.
Where do you want to bring it in? Thank you.
Okay, so they can. All right, thank you, Ms. Hart, for that great introduction. I am Christina Zeratini. I'm a sixth grade teacher at Poulsen. And I have brought four students with me tonight to share a little bit more about a reading competition that we participated in.
Hi, I'm Christian Finnegan.
I'm Lincoln Williams.
I am Colm Ferrar.
I am Cara Polgina.
We participated in a three, four week global reading competition called Rebo. This competition was created by Malcolm Mitchell, a former Super Bowl champion of the New England Patriots. Malcolm found reading difficult when he was growing up, so he is using this platform to inspire students to read who find reading challenging or not enjoyable.
Each week we would get a bookmark to record our school and at-home minutes read. At the end of the week, we entered our total minutes read into a Google form. We then had access to inspirational videos from pro athletes, performers. Usher did the halftime motivational speech and even bestselling authors like Dave Pilbney and Jeff Kinney.
There were forty-two middle school teams, two thousand four hundred and ninety-seven students that registered in Connecticut. All five of our sixth grade teams at Poulsen participated. At the end of the four weeks, our Poulsen sixth graders read a total of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight minutes, which is two thousand seven hundred and ten point eight hours.
Our classroom for a total of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty minutes, which is eight hundred twenty-two point thirty-three hours. We were the top middle school class in the state based on the average of minutes we read. We not only get this honor, but we will be sent a box of books from Scholastic for our classroom libraries. This competition made reading more fun and has inspired us to read more.
And then what I, what spoke to me as an educator was their mission on the Read Bowl website, which was there had three things that they were really looking forward, which was an increased access point, which is creating access to age-appropriate books is proven to almost triple interest in reading within months. Improving reading interest. Our online reading challenges were created to inspire and encourage kids to read in a game-like environment. I am a little bit competitive. And enhancing reading skills. We want kids to engage in reading more frequently, ultimately improving their grade level of reading skills. So I think it was definitely a win-win.
Any questions?
It would be an annual thing. It's something that is a lot of fun.
It was. Would you do it again? Do you remember? They had every week, so it started the four weeks before the Super Bowl. So every week they had to enter that and they had to add up. So we did some, we did some math in L.A. too. So, but yeah, it was good. Yeah, and it was by aver- they averaged the minutes. So, yeah.
Do you discover any particular subjects that you like more? Biographies or sports or?
Yeah, let's see, fiction.
No, which is your favorite book? Each of you, which is your favorite book right now, so far?
Out of my mind.
Concrete Rose.
Rivals.
I just like history books.
Good thing I wasn't.
Thank you very much.
And then the last thing I might, I just had my report. I mentioned this to the board several times. We've shared this with our employee groups as well. I just wanted to make it official when we talk about our pre-K configuration for when we start the new school here in twenty-five, twenty-six. We will have pre-K at both of our elementary school buildings. So Nick River and Brown Elementary School would both have pre-K. It allows us to expand and we were trending this way from three classrooms to four classrooms. So that was going to happen regardless due to student leads. But also it puts us in a better position, I think, to connect those students with kindergarten and they'll be in the, their homeschool, what to transport as much. And we will have the staff from, from T C L C go to both buildings. They'll split. So, you know, it's just exciting to see Nick River really start. There are crews out there. You drive by the, by the property. And, you know, we're making as many decisions and putting things in places as much as possible. Gail, myself and the elementary team and, you know, HR, sometimes technology, me probably every two to three weeks to really begin the process and put things in place. So I'm just excited to share that announcement and as we have decisions made, we'll, we'll share those with the board and the public as soon as we can. Thank you. That completes my report. All right. Thank you. Wonderful. By the way, feel free to go. We're so happy. So are your chief members. Don't feel obligated.
Ms. Hart, keep bringing kids. And nachos and chips and salsa, you know, thematically.
It's such a good one.
Other board member comments? Come back and talk.
I love when the kids are here. I really, it just keeps it, you know, our, that's our, that's our true norm right there. I would like to wish the Daniel Hand High School fencing team good luck this Saturday. They are going to Team States.
They are seated.
So the, the girls' saber team is seated one.
And at this time, is there any audience response to the information that's been presented? Anybody online? All right, thank you. Next up would be our consent agenda. It consists of line item transfers, some budget expenditures as of February twenty-ninth and also a February twenty twenty-four personnel report. It's in your packet. We've had a chance to see it. And we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Bill, second. Emily, thank you. Is there any discussion?
I noticed that on the twenty eighth, I think the last one was the twenty-seventh. That we tried, that we approved a ninety thousand dollar transfer from a para account to a substitute account, but I didn't see the transfer in the three, five numbers. Does that make any sense?
So it was a transfer.
Yep. It was account five, one, one, two, one. We decreased it by ninety thousand and then it went into five, one, two, one, zero. So I can see that it went down or up.
Okay, I will have to go back down. And Maureen, I know you're online and I forgot to look in your direction. There are any questions or?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that question noted, should we call for a vote on this? All right, all in favor? Done. Motion passes. Page nothing. Thank you. Great. At this point, we have board committee reports.
It's a curriculum committee met this evening. And it was presented by Kathy Miller, Mary Ann Connelly, myself, Gail, Dr. Cook. What was presented was the World Language Curriculum by Jennifer Guzzi and Leslie Lopez for seeking board approval for the World Language Curriculum that is caked through. Well, that was a comprehensive presentation and I encourage people to look at the accompanying documents that highlight a lot of the particulars, but I will, you know, I will give an overview. But let me begin that by stating, you know, representative of the committee and myself really left the presentation impressed with the energy, investment, the deep understanding that these people have and the faculty have in what is their curriculum. And they began their presentation by thanking this board for giving them the space and the support for them to do that kind of work and develop their curriculum. You know, it can't be overstated how powerful that energy and investment is as it translates to the students and the success that they articulated in the curriculum. In terms of some of the specifics, it was a very comprehensive group of faculty, you know, the teach world language that are involved in the revision around the curriculum, but it's based on their knowing it and seeing its impact on students. Around the curriculum, but it's based on their knowing it and seeing its impact on students. What's working, what isn't working, and where adjustments need to be made. Overall, the philosophy and the idea around rural language is very comprehensive. Both from the standpoint of a trajectory of exposure to language. To deeper and deeper immersion over the course of their K through twelve experience. You know, but beyond that. The interdisciplinary cross-subject involvement, the focus on. Developing cultural understanding and competence. And really move the students from where they initially start as being. Pretty dependent upon the adults and students and giving, I mean, and teachers rather. And giving one-word kind of responses to the point where they take much more ownership, they can speak. In sentences, paragraphs, and then, you know, when you get into the higher level classes. Doing comprehensive projects uh, that show, you know, much greater competency. What was embedded uh, of note throughout the curriculum? Was their understanding and their investment in the profile of a graduate. Competencies. Uh, a particular note was building in. Student awareness of their performance, evaluating how they're doing and really involving them and being invested in their own. Learning. They noted that teaching language at the young age, despite the fact that it's costly. Hiring, you know, additional teachers uh, is, makes a very positive difference. In terms of the, the level of competency that is able to be developed. Uh, over the time the kids are in our, our schools. So it was a great presentation and again. You know, what we have talked about often in this, in this meeting, we refer to as, you know, the Madison approach. You know, the Madison approach being teacher working and developing their curriculum. Under the leadership of our assistant superintendent and then owning it and. Putting energy into it and constantly refining it, it's, you know, it's just very impressive. Second item on the agenda was, you know, a brief portion and it was in relation to the right to read. Legislation and what Madison's continuing efforts are. To be able to impact both with our legislators and with the state for them to understand. What it is that we're doing in this district and to move their focus. To one that begins to consider student performance, because the current legislation, as our assistant superintendent. Uh, presented very clearly uh, in our meeting tonight. The current approach doesn't consider student performance, even though the reason for the legislation was to impact on. Performance and on all of the standards that the legislation calls for. Uh, you know, it's felt that uh, this district can respond. You know, and has more than ample evidence, so we will continue to pursue that. Uh, what came from our meeting uh, and. Uh, Mary Ann suggested and, and. You know, I believe there's a agreement from the curriculum committee that it would. Be something for the full board to discuss in terms of creating a letter or a position statement uh, from the board. That speaks to our investment in being able to control on the local level our curriculum. And to continue the efforts. Uh, our superintendent also spoke during the meeting to. A meeting that he had with the faculty in which he conveyed to the faculty. Uh, this board's continuing support of the work that they are, you know, have done and continue to do. And our efforts to try and protect that uh, to the degree that we can. There was no public comment and the meeting adjourned at six-thirty-three.
Alright, any questions or discussions for, for Steve? I'd just like to say they're always on point and very instructive, so thank you very much. Um, next up with new facilities, Chairman Emily.
Uh, the facilities committee met this evening at six-thirty. We had a few folks on Zoom, Bill McMan, Pierre Anderson and Felicia Smith joined us on Zoom. And then in attendance, we had our committee members, uh, Stephen, Diane, me and Dr. Cook. So first we had a report on indoor, indoor air quality. Basically, the state is now, we've been participating in the EPA Tools for Schools Indoor Air Quality Assessment. Um, for many years, the state now requires us to participate in this program with annual checklists um, that are. Carried out by school staff to make sure that the state has top of any indoor air quality issues in the schools. And then every five years to have a outside professional come in and do a more comprehensive review. Um, at a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars per school. So we did this, the big five-year evaluation four years ago. Um, but our new facility instructor, Peter Anderson, is looking to possibly get this five-year. Test waived for three of our four schools, because I, next time around, they'll either be brand new or have new HVAC systems in place. So it'll keep us posted on that, um, they might be staggered to some degree looking ahead, but we did walk through and it was, I think, interesting conversation about. The items that they're looking for and it did seem that. The process of the annual checklist done by um, staff really gives us enough chance to stand up. But they said identify issues for bigger issues. Um, we also then received updates on the Daniel Hand High School roof units. Engineering firm is doing the design work and the plans are currently being reviewed, they hope um, in the spring of two thousand twenty-four to finalize construction documents. To go out for bid and then to have a general contractor onboard this summer. Looking ahead, the goal is for next spring of two thousand twenty-five to have the RTUs delivered and then have them. Installed over the summer of two thousand twenty-five, so they're up and running for that beginning of school year and fall of two thousand twenty-five. And it sounds like they're definitely taking lots of lessons learned, with the HVAC system with RTUs to date, um, looking ahead. And then Felicia Smith gave us an update on the Poulsen bathrooms project. They're working on some sample bathrooms this summer, let's see what they'll look like, as you may recall. The priority is making sure that the bathrooms in Poulsen are eighty compliant. And then also that the doors are eighty-eight compliant, so they did combine these two items. They're starting the design phase and the first phase of work. So hope to get a bit out this summer to first redo group bathrooms by the auditorium and then single bathrooms on the hallway. As well as the interior doors, that will be modified for eighty-eight. So they'll start that work this summer and then Felicia did share some samples and colors, they're not as she, um, noted as cheerful. As adorable as maybe the elementary school bathrooms, but as she mentioned, an eye to durability, keep it simple and um, to do maintain. And that was it, there was no public comment and we adjourned at seven o'clock. End of report.
I'd just like to make a note, um, that one of the things that we talked about in facilities that I think is important at the board level. Is that if we can get that um, first year waived, that five-year um. Inspection that they have to do costs twenty-five thousand per school, so if we can get three of the schools staggered from the others two schools. There will be less of an impact on the budget for that year.
Excellent point. And any more questions for Emily? Or Steve or for Diane? Okay, thank you. Well, the next one is easy because it's um, finance and we did that many, so. That will bump us up to, I think, Maureen.
Yes, ours is easy also, because personnel has not met, so we do not have a report.
Alright, thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
Um, and lastly, for the heavy hitter.
Policy committee met on February twenty-seventh, earlier than usual, um, the usual characters were present. We discussed um, a bunch of policies for recession, mostly in a five thousand series with a couple in the nine thousand series. Um, nine thousand series of bylaws, there's only a couple, just to note that um, whenever we. Decide to rescind or revise nine thousand series policies, it takes a two-thirds vote at the board level. We also discussed some policies for rescind and replace, um, the majority of those were nine thousand. And then we also talked about um, the new policy code of ethics and professional responsibility for person, the personnel series, the four thousand. And that came from um, when we had uh, rescinded the policy at the board level and the student section had talked about. Um, putting it in under the personnel, so we discussed that um, and we tabled it and. We wanted to send it back to shipment and Goodwin for further discussion and review, and Dr. Cook is gonna work with them um, to work on. There was uh, the committee did want to have something in there regarding, you know, personnel accepting gifts, mon- you know, with a monetary limit. And so we discussed that at great length, and so we're gonna send it back and see, you know, shipment and Goodwin could give us some more guidance on that and what other districts have. Done with that policy, et cetera. And then I want to just uh, draw your attention to the um, packet that you have tonight. We have a first read for some policies for recession and a first read for some policies for review. And then we have action items tonight that are a second read in the nine thousand series for policies for recession. And again, that will take a two-thirds vote, and then we have a second read for um, policies for review, and one of them is the. School district logo and mascot policy that we have discussed at great length. Um, and so if anybody has any questions regarding the policies um, that are action items tonight or anything else. I'd be happy to try to answer them, you do have in yours packet um, a policy summaries for your policies in your packet from shipment and Goodwin. Uh, end of report.
Okay, great. And I, I think it's probably worth noting that most of the policies we brought in on tonight for recession are because the language is retired before.
Oh, and I just wanted to make one of them know, um, so it's only the beginning of March, but when it comes to policy. Um, Zoe and I are looking ahead because most of the time um, we only meet once a month for policy, we discuss things that comes to the board. Usually requires two reads, so we're really looking to plan for the end of the school year for this year. Because it's the last meeting in June that we really take any action on policies. So if there is anything that's near and dear to your heart that you wish we would look at, just pop me an email. And Zoe and I are gonna meet this week to discuss what to finish up, finish up the school year strong.
Right, thank you.
What's the question?
Yeah, please.
Appreciate all the work that your committee does, I'm just curious, like, so many of these, I'm looking at the notes. It's not mandatory, maybe your appeal, not mandatory, maybe your appeal, but for the first one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, et cetera. I'm just curious, were these policies at one point mandatory and now state statutes have incorporated them? Or did we just go through a policy happy phase in our history?
We used to follow um, like Cave's version of policies and they, at the time, had a lot of policies that. Were not necessarily um, governed by statute or law, it was just like a good idea to have. Um, and shipment and Goodwin is, they're really going in and cleaning up the number of policies that we have. To condense it and make it shorter to things that we must have, um, get rid of, you know, superfluous. Right, um, policies and, and some of these are, are sort of a kindred, so like, for example, the automobile use and parking policy five-one-two-zero-point-nine-point-five. Um, you know, Dr. Cook had discussed with um, Mr. Sadi Terry that, you know, if, if we have a policy on this, it's sort of um. Restrictions what TJ can do with regards to allowing the juniors and seniors to park at school and so.
And we're always gonna be five years behind.
Right, because we're not, you know, reviewing these on an, an annual basis. So if it's something that we don't need, it isn't necessary, um, and it's gonna, you know. Cause us to have to constantly review things and change them in order to keep. Um, on top of it, then it's really not necessary, and a lot of these also were sort of um. Policies that were either put in the wrong place or something that's really something that the administration handles. Um, it doesn't really need a policy to be governed by the board, you know, we make policies but we don't administer them. And a lot of these are things that happened either on a school-to-school basis where it's gonna be handled differently, you know, at Ryerson versus Khan. Right, or that's something that's really handled by the administration and by their student handbooks, et cetera, and that we don't need to have an overall um, policy guidance. Anyone, Dr. Cook, wanna answer that or?
You covered that perfectly, I think that um, past policies, um, as uh, as Diane said, either came from Cave or, or a specific. Incident that might have happened in nineteen ninety-four that we see kind of carry over and so um, that's really the recommendation I've heard from. People that use our policies, families and staff, if they appreciate that happening, that they need to go through.
Thank you.
That's, that's great. Um, next up is Lauren.
We're meeting next week.
I see. Good, how's the breakfast?
Well, as good as it was. No, not when they. Put out. I think since COVID, they had a.
Okay.
Put it in packages.
Alright. Um, alright, our next action item would be a motion to rescind the following policies. Uh, ninety-six fifty policy communication and determination, ninety-seven hundred school board communications. Uh, between a motion. So moved, Diane, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Emily. And um, uh, let's open up for discussion. Remember, this will be a two-thirds vote, right?
Yes.
Uh, see, no need for discussion, let's call to a vote, all in favor? Opposed, none, abstained, none, thank you, motion for anything, nothing. I have number eleven is an action item, uh, we need a motion to approve the following policies. Fifty-one twenty-point-nine homeless students, ninety-five forty transactional business. Ninety-two-ten role of board and members and twelve-hundred school district logo and mascot. Do we have a motion? Alright, thanks Kathy. And then, again, um, is there any discussion on the topic, the motion? Alright.
So have they decided definitely what the logo is? So the, the, the meeting has only met once, we haven't met yet again, so it's still um. In the process, so that, that's a good point though, um, so after this, assuming this passes this evening. The policy goes into effect immediately, so then we would probably need to decide. To sort of waive the policy and, um, while this committee finishes the business that we've already started. Uh, and I would normally, you know, I'm sort of a stickler for rules. Um, but in this particular case, like the, the committee that um, the AD has formed. Pretty much is already made up of the, the people that the Board of Ed would have chosen. Um, you know, with the mix of coaches and, you know, people from the community and, you know, with the AD acting as the chair and, and so it's. It's the same process, um, and they're gonna bring it to the board anyway. Um, so I would be very comfortable with not enforcing, starting over with a new committee. Um, but that is, you know, certainly something that the board can discuss if they wishes to. And at that meeting, did they have like any idea or? Oh, yes, so, um, well, I reported on it before, um. Um, and the logos themselves are going to be. Um, sort of revamped by some students um, using the Fab Lab. And um, it will be brought to the committee and brought to coaches um, for tweaking. And um, there's gonna be a unified approach to the colors and the font. And how things are written across the board for all sports. Um, and we had discussed the, I passed around the, the choices for the colors and the fonts and everything. And so the, the final version will include everything and then uh, the goal is to have, you know, one vendor. Which is the vendor that we currently use for our sports uniforms and um, football helmets, et cetera. And that will help us to decrease the cost across the board for all sports and also for the boosters. And then it will be a unified look, unified logo, unified font, colors for every. Uh, will that come soon, will you be having another? I hope so. I guess that's a question for Chris. But yes, I, I expect it will be soon, I will send an email.
I wouldn't touch with it, I, I think this is a good time for a meeting soon, because uh, which is sports are wrapping up, I think. It's, you know, just boys basketball and fencing, um, still competing, so uh, you know, hopefully. I did, uh, I'll, I'll check in with you again.
Okay. Well, because I was just thinking, we were talking about the budget, talking about the marching band, of course, like all that would be incorporated also, right?
Excellent. Well, at this, let's go ahead and call a vote on this. All in favor of of approving these policies, fifty-one twenty-point-nine? I'm sorry. Yeah, fifty-one twenty, twenty-point-nine, ninety-five forty, ninety-two ten and twelve hundred, the logo mascot, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Opposed? Obeying? None? Thank you. Motion carries eight, nothing. And speaking of uniforms, the next action item is a motion to approve a donation to the Daniel Hand High School Girls Tennis Team. By the hand tennis boosters in the amount of two thousand two hundred for a new tennis team of arms.
So moved. Second. But they should wait.
Well, that's.
So but but normally when you order new uniforms, there's a delay, right?
Let's say.
And I'm sure Dr. Cook will not allow them to order something that's not.
So for for this, for this donation, I believe it was for this year's girls team. So we're gonna tie when to get it ordered. We're gonna have that situation, you know, regardless.
It's gonna be like a five-year.
Yeah, it's gonna be five years for, right. Yeah.
At a time of phase of all.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's okay.
I do have a question, though. Like, do we have it in our, you know. Budget plan and our CIP? We cover uniforms, so why are they paying for the tennis uniforms?
I think they wanted something specific, you know, maybe off-cycle as well. So I think they they did some fundraising. It's a pretty.
These like throwback tennis balls. Are they, is there something special about them or?
It's a pretty tight knit group that I think they did some fundraising. They 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 play together a lot.
Or something trendy?
Yeah. That's a very good explanation. Right, yeah. It's crazy.
I was just curious because normally, normally we pay for that, so.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? None? No extensions? Again, motion carries eight, nothing. Thank you. Do we have a motion approved in the minutes of the last meeting, February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, Board of Education, Board of Education Special Meeting?
So moved.
Diane, second. Thank you, Mary Ann. I did not read the minutes of the fine.
They're good.
They're good. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? None? Thank you. Motion carries eight, nothing. Please feel free to contribute to future agenda items. Meetings, the dates of importance are attached to your packet. And now we could adjourn if we have a motion and second.
So moved.
Diane?
Second.
Emily? Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We will adjourn the meeting at eight twenty.
I know.